I would like, I would like to welcome all listening or viewing this meeting of the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities, whether in person or through technology. This meeting is being recorded both video and audio. During the public comment section of the agenda, community members who wish to speak to the board will be asked to provide their name and address, and then they will have five minutes to speak. Members of the public using Zoom that wish to address the board need to use the raised hand feature at the bottom of the application or window to signal that they wish to address the board during the public comment section. Members of the public connected by phone only need to press the star nine to indicate they wish to address the board in the public comment section. Those attending in person should sign up on the signup sheet located near the entry. Comments are limited to five minutes and should be directed to the board. As these comments are public, the board cautions the visitors to not disclose confidential account information or to disclose account information of an account that is not in their name. Staff will not provide individual account information or history in an open meeting. As always, the public may email or call the BPU with any concerns. The agenda and presentations may be found on the BPU website, or if you're using Zoom, they will appear on your screen. My name is Mary Gonzalez, member at large, position one, and the board president. Other members of our board and staff include Bill Johnson, our general manager, David Haley, member at large, position two, Tom Groneman, second district and board secretary, Bob Mylan, first district, Jeff Bryant, third district, Rose Mulvaney Henry, member at large, third district, and the board vice chair, Angela Lawson, our deputy chief counsel. I'd like to remind you to please put your phones on silent. Please also be aware that the microphones are very sensitive and then can pick up and record comments made anywhere in the room. Before we begin our meeting, please rise and join me in reciting our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, Angela, take roll call for attendance, please.
Roll call Bryant.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Groneman.
Here.
Haley.
Present.
Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
You have a quorum.
I'd like to call for a motion to approve of the agenda of the regular session.
This is Rose, I second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the work session of November 2nd. Are there any corrections or additions or questions?
So moved.
This is Jeff, I second.
So moved in seconded, roll call, please.
Roll call Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Before I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session, are there any comments, additions, corrections?
Madam President.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President, for the regular session from November 2nd. On page three of the minutes, it states first at the very top that Ms. Johnson said that along with other agencies, I certainly would want to change that to reflect that the general manager would be Mr. Johnson. And then also in the second paragraph of that same page, page three, there was a response, it says to Ms. Mulvaney's question of Ms. Henson in customer service regarding looking into agencies. I don't know, we could play it back, but I believe that question was posed to Ms. Henson by myself, though I know there was a roundtable discussion.
Okay, so we need to have two corrections, one for Mr. Johnson's name.
Okay, I did go over that before I put Ms. Mulvaney Henry, and it was in fact Ms. Mulvaney Henry that had asked her about the agency being on the website and their, the agency phone numbers and email, I believe it was.
I stand.
That specific question, there was a discussion.
I stand with appreciation to Ms. May's clarity and will accept it as that. As to another issue beyond that of Mr. Johnson's title, I was wondering, in the public comment section, and as you stated, Madam President, our policy is somewhat not to share account information of those who come before us. I know in our public comments, we have a full conferee who came before us and the address, the service address, and I didn't know if that's gray area for sharing personal information in terms of account-related information to have that conferee and a full address.
We ask for their, when they address the board, we ask for their, their name and their address.
All right, just for a point of clarification, again, I appreciate it. Thank you.
This is Jeff, move to approve with the one correction.
This is Rose, I second.
Roll call.
Roll call Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Turn the meeting over to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. Jenny, is there anybody signed up? Rob, are there anybody signed up?
Yes, I do, hand raised.
Okay. Ms. Ellis, could you state your name and address for the record, please? Soon as you're unmuted.
Ms. Ellis. Oh, I'm sorry, Rob, I thought you said she was unmuted.
She is, but she keeps muting and muting.
Ms. Ellis.
Ms. Ellis, can you hear us?
Mr. Johnson, can we move to the second?
Yep.
And then come back.
Rob, can you? Mr. Gorman, if you can state your name and address for the record, please. Let's see, unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
We've got five minutes.
Thank you very much, this is Ty Gorman at 2843 Parkwood Boulevard, KCK 66104. Just wanted to, to call in to relay that we've, I've been to quite a few community meetings lately talking about BPU and how we want the, the shut-off protections this winter to be more stringent, to make sure that nobody is shut off of their water during the winter at all, or their power at any point. It could put anybody's health at risk. Also hearing that separating out the parts of the bill that are fixed costs that are fees that are to pilot these extra costs that are contributing to people's power and water getting turned off that shouldn't be on the bill should be removed and and also that we need to have a real transparent planning process and have sharing of information with not only the public but also the city council and have planning processes and integrated resource plan in 2023. And this is especially important since there's so much federal money and opportunity to reduce folks' bills this year from the Inflation Reduction Act and the Infrastructure and Jobs Act. The people who are, the customers have to be involved in those planning processes to get access to that money and those competitive grants. It's no information coming out of BPU yet about, you know, what's being worked towards and how the community can be involved in looking for clean energy and energy efficiency solutions in our communities. So we really want to, we really want to see some, some engagement with the community on that. And I've shared a number of resources with BPU on best practices for those customer engagement and integrated resource plan asks and as well as customer protections that exist in other states that don't exist in the BPU for written notices, delays, legal recourse on shut-offs. There's a whole list that I've been able to share in the past that I don't have time for here. Also want to say that we, there seems to be money available for raises in the BPU, raises of the general manager, lot of a lot of high costs in the BPU that folks have expressed anger about considering there doesn't seem to be resources to help enough people out who are hurting and getting their power and water turned off. So that's, that's what I'll leave that for now, just wants to say we're, we're community members coming together in a couple of weeks. We'll be asking BPU board members and, and city council folks to, to attend and, and answer questions and talk with a big group of community members probably at the weekend for Thanksgiving. So hope to hear from you, and I know I've received some communications from Rose Mulvaney and hope to hear from, from others before, before that meeting and get on the same page, so appreciate the time, thank you.
Mr. Gorman, this is Jeff Bryant, so I've received no direct communication about any meeting, so it would really be difficult for me to choose one way or the other, whether I would attend without pertinent information.
Yeah, certainly fair, we have, there has, has not been a, a, a direct invite for the specific meeting sent out yet, it's just a discussion amongst, you know.
You have thirty seconds.
Well, I'm, he's rebutting to me.
I'm sorry.
So, so my email address is jbrant@bpu.com, I'd be interested in seeing the invite, thank you.
Absolutely, we'll, we'll send, it'll be sent out as soon as possible, appreciate it, appreciate your attendance.
Any other comments from the board?
There are no other hand raised.
All right, so I was just notified that Mrs. Ellis had said she no longer wants to. Can you mute out? Thank you. Mrs. Ellis no longer wants to address the board, so we'll go ahead and move on. Next topic, I'll ask Maurice to come up. Last time we asked Maurice to, to update the board on where we like to go with the risk management plan, and there was a policy that is part of that, although he's sent out stuff, information, emails prior to our last board meeting, and then we listed that as a conversation topic, and so now I'm bringing it back to see if the board has any questions and if you're ready to adopt it.
I believe there's a resolution number 5279 before you. We discussed that at the last board meeting on November 2nd, and I guess I've opened any questions you might have before hopefully of taking up that resolution.
Maurice, thank you, so at the, did I dream at the last, when you presented at the last board meeting on the second, were, did you have problems with your PowerPoint?
Yes, I did.
Oh, and I don't mean you, I just meant, we had problems with the PowerPoint, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Rob, I'm not pointing, I'm just, no, but, but I think that, and I know that we had, that we actually had the resolution presented to us before that meeting as well.
Yes.
And I, I guess one thing I wasn't sure of, and I just want to make sure that I'm clear on, we did not, the board did not have any specific discussion about this resolution prior to this discussion tonight, or am I misremembering? Does anybody remember if we discussed this resolution?
I think that our discussion was just during, during and at the end of the presentation last meeting.
Okay.
Was the only discussion that I'm, I remember.
Okay.
Ms. Mulvaney, to answer your question regarding the beginning of the presentation, this is mostly background information as well, so the meat of the presentation was a little bit later.
Okay. So I have questions, and honestly, Maurice, I know that you are an attorney, so you may be able to ask them, but I don't know if they're better for Angela, so I'll just ask the question and whoever is better to answer.
I'll probably let her shoot first.
Okay. So Angela, in the opening whereas clause for the resolution, we refer to the Kansas City Kansas Board of Public Utilities and refer to it as the board in quotes. I'm wondering if we're running into the same issue that we have in the charter itself, and, and I'm sure you were mimicking the charter language to be consistent, but you know we've had the question.
I, I understand, and I did, and you're absolutely correct, I mimicked the charter language in this. I think in, in, I understand the board's concern because we do toggle and it's frustrating, but that's where the language came from, where the board in this instance is the board, but then it is this board that is taking the action.
Well, but in, in that whereas clause, we are specifically referring to who has the responsibility to exclusively manage, operate, maintain and control the daily operation of the water department, the electric department. And, and so I just think we need to somehow be more clear, because I know that nobody here.
I mean, the reference that first whereas is not crucial to the adoption, so then if you want me to deconstruct that and bring it back, I certainly can do that, because I do understand the concern.
Okay. I, I guess maybe put a pin in that one for a second. And so, well, I think you're going to say the same thing there, so I'm not going to ask that.
I mean, I can, as all the, you know, I assume you have the same comment to several instances.
I, I don't, I don't, because I think if you, if we fix it once, we know who we're talking about, is, is what I think, and I obviously welcome any comments from the rest of the board on that.
This is Jeff, so, you know, I do, I do have to agree that it could, it is a little vague and could be, you know, when read by a layman, it could be looked at as it's talking about us as a board are responsible for the day-to-day operations. So instead of the utility, so.
If I can certainly change language to clarify which, with what it's referring to and which instance of the word.
That would be nice.
So in, in section three, we're talking about the implementation of risk management procedures. I presume that those have not been developed yet, Maurice.
Can you repeat that question?
Section three, the implementation of risk management procedures?
Yes, they have, so.
They have?
We have procedures drafted and we're walking through that process right now, so yes, they are.
Okay, so, so before the board would adopt this resolution and this, I guess this policy, I, I, I think, I mean, would the board be able to see what the risk management procedures are?
It's a little bit outside of what we usually do, because those are mostly like internal procedures. Does that make sense, or internal procedures, implement the board's policy? I, that's a little bit different, I leave that up to Bill kind of make that decision.
Well, so, so.
Typically what we do with all of our policies and procedures is the board will adopt policies, and it's up to me and staff to come up with the procedures on how we're going to enact upon those policies or enforce those policies. And those are not things that the board typically approves.
I hear you, and I know that we have had this discussion on many occasions in my three years on the board, and I know we've talked about standard operating procedures, none of which I have ever seen. And I, I think that this is, this is a very comprehensive policy. This is a comprehensive program that's being put in place, which I think is fabulous, by the way. I think you guys have done a great job with it. But it is something very different than the utility has ever done in the past, and so that, I guess from my perspective, I, I think I would like to see a little bit more of the meat and not just the bones on this one, but certainly that's up to the rest of the board as well.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So yeah, I guess our question.
Are you asking to see that before?
I am asking to see that before, I would be comfortable voting on it, but that's just my, that's just me.
And how long would that be to get that?
It's different than what we normally do, so I mean, if the board wants to get into operating procedures on everything we're doing, then we can certainly have that conversation before we produce policies, but it is a change in direction from what this utility has ever done before.
And I guess from my perspective, I certainly don't see that as a, a bad thing for this board, but maybe other board members feel differently.
This is Jeff, so, so one of the things about being a board member, in my opinion, is that, that it's our responsibility to hold the general manager accountable, but not to get into the weeds of the day-to-day operations. There is a fine balancing line on how do you validate whether or not the, the actions are sufficient and appropriate. But I'm guessing that to look at all of the risk management policy, it would be a fairly large binder.
Not yet, so it'd be a build-out, so how it starts, we, we have a plan internally. That plan has identified, and we're going through that process of prioritization, right? So when you start rolling that out, it start meaning you have plans at other departments to basically curb the risk or mitigate the risk, so it builds out at that point in time. We do have other risk management plans in place for like energy risk management for SPP. That, that's about fifteen-page document, because it pertains to just that risk, but goes to the ultimate plan of the utility, does that make sense?
Yeah, and I'm imagining that some of this may or may not be best to present in public, because it does pose a potential safety risk for the utility, you know, as far as how we treat potential risks for our controls.
Yes, once we start building that out and we have those procedures in place of where we mitigate the risk, it will be, yeah, some confidential information, that goes into security of doors. It can be from a NERC compliance issue, from ECC or anything like that, where we see there's a risk.
So would it be possible to see at least the general outline of what the, what the project, the scope of the project is going to look like over the future?
It's not my call, I would refer to.
Well, I understand the confidentiality.
Without, yeah, without breaking any confidentiality, basically just showing us as a board is, this is the projection of how we plan to attack the risk policy, and you know, like, we're going to, here's the, here's the basic blocks of the areas that we're going to attack, and kind of like the priorities of what, I mean, without us getting into the weeds, but still being able to see what the plan generally will look like.
And you will get a piece of that, of the top priority risk, and that's what we talked about the last time. Once we go to that prioritization, there would be a top fifteen risk we see at the utility. You will see those risks, barring if there is a security risk or some confidentiality thing we have to cover up. You will see those top fifteen, and there will be times to ask those questions, how we're identifying them, how we're mitigating those top fifteen risks. Altogether, there's a lot more risk, but the fifteen is just a little bit easier for you to digest, if that makes sense.
So, so I'm not a lawyer, but what the gist I got out of this is more about just giving permission to, or direction to the general manager to implement or, or to build and, and implement a policy.
Yes, so as, as you recall, this summer, this is kind of like backwards, we've already started that, because that process already took off, and this is going back and codifying that.
Okay.
So this, this requires that action, it requires that it be adopted and amended as needed, so it's now a requirement.
Yeah, it's more of just like giving direction that, that the board wants to see this done.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so I, I would be okay with, with that as voting on that, as long as we know that we're going to see more information about the risk management policy as it, as it is created.
And, and you will, and I, I'm hoping to have, hopefully, beginning of the year, that top fifteen and how we're addressing those top fifteen, and some of them means we have a risk plan for that mitigation of that actual identified risk, right? And so we'll have that process and then have how we're addressing that risk.
Okay.
What I, what I've asked Maurice to do is to be prepared to come back and maybe even go into executive session, depending on what that risk level is and what we need to discuss at that point, you know, if it's an executive session, that means we can't disclose it to the public, so. But let us gather that, I mean, the, the whole idea is to try to get the board comfortable around how we're managing risk, okay, so, so there is a reporting in that's going to come out of it. It's just, we're still kind of developing part of that and making sure that all of staff and every, and we're all comfortable with what is our risk, and then how do we go and identify part of it, some of it we've already done, there's still a little bit more work to do.
Yeah, I mean, over time, the compliance part is, you know, I've just seen that over time and how we've worked with that and with the audits, and so I know it's like an ongoing process, so I'm, I'm very familiar with that part, for sure.
And that's how the risk is going to be built out the same way, the, the two actually walk hand-to-hand with each other. The compliance part, the NERC compliance, it has a risk format in there, because a lot of this is being built out as a part of compliance, because it, it mimics each other, if that makes sense.
The final paragraph on page two. It, it says that the BPU risk management framework and procedures shall be reviewed annually. Who is that, who, who will be doing that review?
It would be me and the GM.
Okay.
And so, and that's typical with most of our policies, so if you go through any type of policies from us, procedures, if you go through any of our NERC or anything else we have in place, environmental, we do annual reviews of that, and you look through the last page, you have a couple of dates, and I have a date when it was last reviewed, who reviewed it, and any updates. So we have a lot of people that, you know, transition out jobs, transition titles, that's our time to update that stuff, and so we go through, update that stuff. There's departments that have been changed and moved over to another department, we make those changes at that time to make sure they're still updated.
It also talks about external audits.
Yes.
Or several or accountability function.
Yes.
So these, this risk management policy could be or will be part of a external audit.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so I, I believe at the last meeting, I talked about that, under the risk management department, that we really don't have any full-time staff, but we do have outside consultants, and you guys are familiar with Ruben Brown. That's one we're going to use, I'm working actually on the outline of what that looks like for the coming year, for them to implement their stuff in the risk management plan, and what that looks like from auditing standpoint. One is the third part of audit for some of the higher-risk stuff that we see, that would be our SPP, bidding in our energy, you know, bidding in our resources, taking energy, having a third party look at that and check off on that from a risk management standpoint to make sure they're following the plan we have. We felt that would be the best place from that to be removed from it, have that type of look at.
Well, comments is very simple. Lord, please stop trying to micromanage the risk management program. Give the staff opportunity to do the job. Thank you.
So would it be? I'm just going to, so is accurate to say that should this resolution be adopted, 5279, that that would probably be the last intervention for policy direction that the board would have, it would be more purely interaction between yourself, Mr. Moss, and the GM in terms of what those policy decisions are, the board would basically be stepping away from any future.
Not necessarily. It would be like financials.
I do understand the budget here, I was going to get to that in terms of what the line item, budget.
We operate on a regulatory environment today, okay? That don't necessarily mean that it won't change tomorrow, I mean, next year, don't necessarily mean it won't change in two or three years, okay? This thing is going to have to be able to be adaptable to any other things that we may come under that may pose risk to us, okay, so, so we're building, building around what we know today and how we're projecting risk to be in the next. So we're building, building around what we know today and how we're projecting risk to be in the next few, few years based on what we know today. But we're not in control of federal government. We're not in control of SPP or any other type of regulatory. Authority that may come and say, hey, we're changing rules and now you have to adopt, adopt to this. Okay, so.
Well, in terms of the budget, so that gets into some of the nuts and bolts of what the budget might. Need for the implementation of some of these policies. From that standpoint, if we're presented with that at some point future, we just don't know what that or have any idea with. Them not being delineated right now. And certainly, as you say, some of them can't be. We don't know what they'll be, but. A ballpark figure for the implementation of some of what will be developed after this resolution, should this resolution pass.
If, if I could give a hypothetical real quick. It would be similar to, let's say, we had something identified that the power plant has high risk and it was a capital type high risk. Just during your capital work session, you would have seen this is a capital. Thing that we have to spend money on because of upgrade or something we have to do because it has been identified as high risk and because we're doing this. So it could be monetary. Sometimes it's not. Sometimes it's just having a plan in place. Like if you failed to plan, you. You, you plan to fail, you're right, you always say. Some of it is that, that we have to have a plan in place. In case there's a hundred year flood that hit the plant. Do we have something in place if there's a flood and do we have plans to how we're going to operate moving forward? Some, a lot of it's planning. Some could be financial, some could be insurance, some could be a, a number of things. As to that come forward, you'll see some of those risks as we report back to you. But you also should see it during that budget process or during the year when we identify, hey, this was a high risk for us and we're addressing it. And just kind of come back to the board from that level.
Thank you. So, I mean. I don't think that. There should be any concern about me or staff reporting back on. Anything this utility would be confronted with in terms of. You know, high risk things that may impact our operations or pose some type of, some type of a risk to this community. I mean, we're, we're going to do that. I mean, I think.
I mean, we, we do it now. This is just bringing it together under one umbrella. That's basically what we're doing. Every day, Jeremy and Jared. Everyone, Jerry, they have risk. The rest is just addressed at that level. Now we're bringing it up to make sure we're tracking it and from a higher level. So we're, we're doing this now. That is just keeping it. And make sure we're doing it across the utility.
Prime example of that is, is, you know, on a legal standpoint, we've, we've certainly updated the board on here's what the utility is dealing with. On litigation side, okay, we've also brought IT in. Couple of years ago to talk about here are some of the cybersecurity things that we're dealing with. So as those things come up, I mean, we're going to be communicating. Here are the things, some of it can be public conversations, some may not be, but here are the things that we're confronted with. Where we feel like we're in front of it unless there's something that just. Comes at us unexpected, but we'll be communicating. And we'll have some type of scorecard as to, you know, where BPU fits in terms of risk today. And that was one thing that I had talked about. Okay, we can identify a lot of risk. Okay, but that could be a moving target. So, so within. This is a potential high risk, but it really don't pose a high risk towards the day. Give me a real time update as to where we are so that, you know, we will know that. And as we move farther closer towards that becoming a risk, we can already have a set of action items that could go into play.
And to answer one of the initial questions, section two, second paragraph. Requires the general manager to make the board aware of certain risks. So it incorporates that as a requirement into the policy.
Best risk management plan has its serious management. I think the goal is need to accept. Risk plan is in place, move forward, let us there, make sure that the plan. Is here too as presented. So put time to make some more out of it. Think very well what we need to do. We have no idea what the risk may be today or tomorrow.
This is Jeff, you know, I, I like to tell people that the utility. Industry in general is always, and then there's always an impending disaster on the horizon. Because it's an extremely volatile industry. So, you know, I mean, we've been through this with EPA, with, with so many things in the past. So the idea of, of. Gathering all these risks together and having plans for each of the potentials. Were one will, will help ease some of my concerns, you know, like sleep better at night, but also. It'll, it'll train. The utility to look at these and, and step back and think about exactly how they're going to deal with them. So as you, as you build out this. This plan, then when new items are identified, it's much easier to. Infront them because you already have gone through this planning process and you under, you're able to identify it. So I, I think, I think this is a. Is a good idea to finally, you know, see this turning into an actual plan. So I would like to. Propose. The adoption of resolution fifty-two seventy-nine.
And that's what the changes that was.
Yeah, with the changes as identified by board.
Jeff has made a motion. Is there a second?
Discussion. What, what changes? You said, what, you said what changes that have been?
It will be separated out so it is clear. The language is clear with the board when it is referring to the utility as a whole. And when it is referring to the elected body.
The first paragraph.
The first paragraph. Okay.
And then as it carries out.
Okay, and the, the typo too and the therefore clause.
Yes.
Board of Public Utilities to add the plural.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it's been moved in, segmented, roll call.
Roll call Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Groneman.
Hi.
Haley. Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
No.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next I'll add. Come up. We've talked about benchmarking quite a bit, electric water. I told you, we're right in the middle of a customer service benchmarking exercise. Our water benchmarking is. AWWA, they do, they have an annual benchmarking exercise. Many other water utilities participate in it. APPA has one. So Philip is going to present. Some of our, some of the results of our participation this year.
Thank you, sir.
Whenever Rob is.
He's going to give me this. Always like to control as much as I can. There we go.
Those hurt me for a long time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you again, everybody. My, again, as Mr. Johnson said, my name is Philip Brown. I'm a senior civil engineer over in our water engineering department. Worked with Steve, our workforce, Steve, sorry. With that, this is, we did this presentation before. But we also know that how important this is and I'm going to just take a little bit of time to go back over some of the details. So why are we doing this? AWWA benchmarking, as Mr. Johnson said, is, is important. These are one of the tools that our executive directors, executive managers, senior management. Use to help direct that strategic focus, help us build our goals and our initiatives that really take us forward into the future. So a key KPI is that key performance indicator. One of the big things about all K. Metrics, benchmarks, analytics is the definition. It may seem really small, but I've been in places where people were talking about efficiency. And people have different definitions and it doesn't work until you all speak in the same language. So here our benchmark is going to use to compare us to other utilities. AWWA is all about water work. So we have water and wastewater. And so you're going to see some of our numbers and we're trying to do our best to compare us to other water utilities. There's about forty-nine of them in total. And of course, the biggest one and the third one, which I'm really looking forward to for next year. Is how we're developing, tracking and improving our performance based on these KPIs. Some of the things the IT group is doing, especially related to some software wrote out for like Tableau and other things are really going to be instrumental. And making certain that our leaders are able to make important decisions throughout the day. Now, who was our team? So because this does address the entire utility, we have to work with accounting, customer service, environmental. Human resources, IT, marketing, and of course our water operations. So that's our treatment plant, our distribution people. And our support staff like myself and our engineering group to our mapping GIS. We generally start in January. We spent February, March gathering this data. About April, I'm sitting down, looking at all the spreadsheets that people have been typing in numbers. Going back through, just make sure we got all the data we're submitting in May. This has happened all across the nation. In fact, in some international instances, there's some water utilities from like Guam, for instance. Everyone's sending in their information to AWWA. They do their QA QC. And then about Octoberish, they generally send out their final report. There's actually a book also that we're still waiting for them to publish and I was hoping to have it by now. And that really allows us to drill in not only to just water utilities, but also water utilities close to us. So that will be like. Water, wine, Topeka and other places like that. Well, because a combined, alright. So a KPI, a goal for a good KPI, as you guys are, you're going to hear about more benchmarking in the future. It should very. Be specific, it should be measurable, accurate, relevant, practical, and the hardest part is to be understandable. I've seen some KPIs, they look extremely useful, but as soon as you try to explain them. I'm pretty sure we might come across one as I attempt to explain. That's probably just my fault making a mistake, but it should be understandable. Problems and issues with these is, like I said, you have to have the definitions. It could be some gray areas, just how people. Term what is work versus what isn't work. But also can you verify the quality of your data? If you just go out and I ask somebody, I was talking to some little kids, we coach flag football. I like, are you fast? Little kids say yes. Well, they're not really fast, but they'll tell you to watch them. And so those all things are important. But this all ties back to percentiles because that's really what we use to compare each other. And so when I say a percentile, as we work on this, when I say someone's in a twenty-fifth percentile, that means you're better than. Twenty-five percent of the rest of the people who did the same measure, okay, our seventy-fifth percentile. So if I use like. Wait, because I've been trying to. Okay, don't go there. They don't go there. So, but that's what a percentile is. Alright, so here we go. So you're going to see some good KPIs or some measures where BPU water is doing good. You're also going to see some places where we need to improve and we're going to kind of talk about those things. For, for this first one up here, so this, one of the categories is business operations and organizational development. So for example, we have customer accounts per employee. That's second column, that's the BPU number. That's what we actually do. And then those next four columns kind of break out the statistics for. So you see the seventy-fifth percentile. Those are the people who are doing extremely well. Alright, they're doing better than seventy-five percent of the rest. The median is right there in the middle, twenty-fifth percentile. And then the count, and I want you to notice this count changes. These are the number of water utilities that also submitted information. So with that being said, this is a very small sample pool. And not only that, typically people, utilities who do this tend to be the better performing water utilities in the nation. Okay? They typically are the guy, are the people who are going to develop their risk management policies to make sure to have plans in place. They're going to develop. Their plans and their IT infrastructure so that way they can get out there and be on top of all these things. They tend to be a little larger or newer, so. But that, yes, sir.
Philip, this is Jeff. So, so when you talk about that. Are the majority of these other utility, water utilities, just water and not electric and water?
Yeah, yes, that is true. Now, in the data, they don't break out if it's electric or water. They break out the utilities in three categories. They say if you're wastewater only, if you're water only, or if you're combined, meaning your water and wastewater. But I'm sure there are some like, I think LA, LA is in there. LA is a water and electric, but it's huge. That's. Not a comparison I would ever want to do, but that is one example. So customer accounts per employee, just to walk through the numbers, we have three hundred and forty-eight. That puts us in between the twenty-fifth percentile and the median. Alright, so maybe like forty percent better than the rest, everyone else who did this. Our employee turnover rate, one point nine percent. We're doing better than seventy-five percent of all the other utilities. BPU has an extremely low turnover rate. That's not a surprise here. People like to work here. No matter how much we may complain, we do like working here. We come every day. I collect my check. I have never missed collecting my check. Debt ratio, debt ratio is about thirty-eight percent. So right there, right in the middle, right in that medium. Our debt service coverage ratio, I am not a finance person. Our debt service coverage ratio is one point nine one. This is, that means we're below the twenty-fifth percentile. My limited understanding is if you want a better definition, ask someone to finance, but debt service coverage ratio is how much cash we have. To pay for our debt. And this is really indicative to, indicative of our rate structure. Okay? So if you look at our debt ratio, the amount of debt we carry is actually normal for water utility. But when you look at how much cash we had to pay for it, we're kind of lower on that. So, and the only way we get cash is from our rates, so. But that's, that's above my pay grade. Operating ratio, fifty-six percent right there in the median. And our system renewal replacement rate, zero point seven is a little bit lower, but one percent is actually a really good rate to be at. Because a pipeline should, when we do our designs, we're shooting it for a hundred year mark. So if we're able to hit that one percent percent, we're able to replace that and install it and maintain our system. So it's a really good goal. So, but what are some metrics that are important to customers? Well, technical service complaints. And this will be an example of one of your constituents calling and saying, hey, my water smells like rotten eggs. Or hey, my water is pink. Okay, these are actual water quality problems that can happen. As you can see, BPU ranks zero point eight. We're doing better than seventy-five percent of all these other water utilities. And it shouldn't be surprising when you look at some of the engineering designs that were made, decisions made in the early two thousands such as building our. Collector well in the way we do. We engineer out a lot of those problems. You can see the results, decisions you make today help generations in the future. So that kind of goes into our newer water treatment plant. So regulatory compliance, we haven't had any issues. When it comes to regulatory compliance for our water treatment plant, we have some amazing staff members, some great people who have been there for twenty, thirty years. Every day, day in, day out, they know that plant better than, better than anything. So. And then also our available years of water. I'm sure some of you guys heard what's happening in California, like Mead and other places. Mississippi, they don't have water. We still have sixty-four years. Again, seventy-five percentile, we're doing an amazing job. So I also say I was going to show some bad, not bad metrics, some places where we can improve. If we were perfect, we wouldn't have any place to improve. We are not perfect. And that's what we're about to start talking about disruptions. Interru, disruptions are really our leaks and breaks. I'm sure these are the things your customers may call you about. Hey, there's water shooting out the ground. There's a geyser. There's a sinkhole. BPU is old. Some of our water mains go back to eighteen sixty, okay? We have some very old water system, I mean, parts of our town. And also. I mean, it takes a lot to take care of it. There's no other way to put it. Our, the breaks and leaks per hundred miles is fifty-two point nine. This is way higher than most others, okay? So you can see that we have an older system. We can have some pipe materials such as galvanized piping that we have to put in, especially doing, anytime there's a war. Quality of metals go down, the price of metal shoots through the roof. And of course, we started looking for alternative means to be able to replace water mains. They come back to buy this eventually. Yes. O N M cost per account. So this one is, we have five hundred twenty-one dollars for right about that median. Okay, right about that median range. O N M cost per million gallons, two thousand six hundred. That's a really good number, right? Again, right there in that median. Our infrastructure leakage index, what this number is attempting to do, AWWA, they started to do some research and they discovered through statistics and other things that. If I just told people, hey, we produce a billion gallons of water. And three hundred billion gallons of that went down the drain, so there's a thirty percent unaccounted for water. Not everyone can always understand it. So what they came up with was this infrastructure, infrastructure. Not everyone can always understand it. So what they came up with was this infrastructure, infrastructure leakage index. And what this is supposed to be a measure of is how much water you're actually losing compared to what is estimated. So a whole bunch of math. Basically, we can do a lot better. So I'm almost done. I do appreciate your time. If you want some more of these, I could, I have a, there's a lot of metrics. We only chose a few to highlight. And there's also a lot of different definitions. I could gladly send those to you or whoever. Um. But some of the lessons we always learn in the courses, the importance of definitions. We drastically improve our data collection. We use our GIS system. We put that in the hands of the lead man, in the hands of the people out in the field doing it. And that really helped improve it. Our system of records, uh making certain we have to do a very thorough review of how paperwork gets moved around. We started discovering pieces of paper disappearing and I improved. But most of all, um is just being thankful for all the people who are working. So I'm very thankful for all the assistance from everyone who did this. Without any questions.
Philip, I don't have so much of a question. It's just, you know, uh I don't think that I've ever uh calmed about telling the water department how much they're appreciated, how well they do and how much they do with so little. Uh are, you know, you guys haven't had a rate increase for six years and uh oh, ten years. Thank you, thank you for the correction. But yet, you know, you do what you can to keep from kicking the maintenance can down the road. And I mean, it shows that that we definitely have an old system when you look at the high breaks and leaks. But even with that, you know, I see crews out there working diligently to get them fixed as quickly as possible and and uh I mean, there's just, there's not enough thanks to the, to the water department for everything that they do.
Thank you for saying that. I mean, one thing I really hope to show next year is some trends of these numbers, especially those breaks and leaks. Those guys have been busting their tail to make sure those numbers start to decrease and and we're gonna be able to show some of those numbers improving over time. So next year, look forward to that.
And you'll, you'll also have the local utilities.
Yes, that's what I'm hoping. I'm still waiting on that book to come out. So we'll get some, be able to dial in and really start comparing to more apples to apples as much as possible.
Thank you. Alright, next uh various GM staff reports. Uh quick update on the county administrator uh task force uh met with a search firm twice this week, once on Monday and then again yesterday to uh kind of go or part of the plans that uh we now have in place. And that firm is GOV HR, uh G O V H R is the name of the firm. And then last night, uh we met, I think at five o'clock over at City Hall uh with the entire task force team to talk about scheduling. And the entire process that we're getting ready to go to. Now, mind you that this is the second search firm that uh been put in place. The first one uh kind of backed out of the out of searching for a new county administrator. And now this one, uh my initial impressions is uh they seem to be uh pretty experienced at doing this type of, type of work. So in the conversations I've had already with them, it's gone very well. So uh timeline goes in the next year. The goal, I hope, is to name a county administrator sometime in the first quarter and then uh not knowing when that person may start, uh I'm expecting there there'll be both the internal and external candidates. Uh we just have to work through uh work through the process there. Next thing is Laurie's already emailed the board uh date for our uh budget retreat. Uh data is on December the fifth. Hopefully uh hopefully you can make it. If you can't, if there's other things that pop up, let us know quickly so we can uh we can work on getting another date established. Uh but if you haven't read your email, look at your email. I think she sent that out last a few days ago. Laurie, what time? Eight thirty, yep. So we'll have a, we'll have it in this room uh. And uh we'll have the room configured to, you know, the round tables that you guys are familiar with. And uh and then the last thing I have is uh November twenty-first. Um Groneman will be celebrating his birthday. I didn't, I don't know the number.
Too many.
Happy, happy birthday, Tom.
Thank you, thank you.
Madam President, that's all I have.
Okay, we'll start board comments. Jeff.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to address the elephant in the room. Recently, the board approved a contract extension with the GM which included a pay increase. A recent article in the Star quoting fellow board members has left quite a few people in my district asking me to comment on my perspective of the vote. I will attempt to shed light on my personal decision process. Nearly four years ago, the past GM retired, which caused the board to conduct a nationwide search for a replacement. While doing this, we discovered that the amount of pay we were willing to offer fell far below the average pay for a general manager of a public utility of our size. In fact, we're only paying about two-thirds of the national average, which the national average currently sits at around four hundred and seventy-five thousand annually. This amount is justified, the amount that we are paying the current general manager is justified by the extensive years of education, knowledge and practical experience required to attain a level of proficiency to manage utilities of our size. After negotiations between the GM and the board, we arrived at terms and recent contract extension was brought before the board for a vote. The increase for twenty twenty-three will bring the GM to a rate that is twelve percent higher than his predecessor from four years ago. This equates to an annual average increase of three percent, which is in line with the increases for other BPU utility employees across the same timeframe. I asked myself a series of questions to help determine whether the requested increase was justified, even though I knew that the GM pay scale was seriously under market rate. I always trade away the pros and cons of any financial decision, whether at the BPU during my regular day job or even in my home life. Here are the few of the conclusions that led me to make a vote in favor of the contract extension. One, has the GM fulfilled the fiscal duties required of him by the board? Yes. Two, do the employees and board agree with every day-to-day decision by the GM? No. Three, has he overseen the successful contract negotiations that have kept our utility employees at a scale in line with the national average for public utility workers? Yes. Four, will the pay increase for the GM bring him in line with the national average for general managers of like-sized public utilities across America? No, it will leave him around two-thirds of the national average. Five, has he successfully led the utility through a pandemic while maintaining the expenses within the annual budget? Yes. Six, has he successfully navigated the utility during a period of the highest inflationary costs in forty years? Yes. Seven, has he brought forth to the board a rate increase for either water or electric during his nearly four-year tenure as general manager? No. Eight, in the first four years, has he solved all the issues that have plagued our utility for decades? No. While I may not always agree with the day-to-day decisions made by Mr. Johnson, I support his tenure as general manager at the Board of Public Utilities. I also that know that this man has served our utility in various roles for over forty years. When I think of my own similar time in the workforce, I realize that he too will be retiring in the near future. This means that once again, the board will be thrust into the position of determining a new captain for this ship. Once again, I'm sure that the pay discrepancy between the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities and the rest of the nation will come to a head. My hope and prayers are that we can find a capable replacement within the ranks of our utility. One that sees a value in our community beyond that of the pay scale. I feel that somewhat, only someone who has spent significant time in Wyandotte County can truly appreciate the needs of its residents. And I feel like our general manager does that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Um my comments are, I'd like to thank everybody that did their presentation for the capital budget. And I'm sorry that I missed half of it today. And I would al- also tonight like to ask permission to attend the APPA's Joint Action Conference in January.
This is Jeff move to approve.
Joint Conference APPA, it's in January. I'm asking now because if you, if you get can, if I get consent, I can, and I do um get to go, I can uh sign up before December ninth and it's at a reduced rate. I'm sorry. It's in uh San Diego, California. Um roll call, please. It's been moved in second to approve my travel.
Roll call Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Groneman.
Hi.
Haley.
Hi.
Mylan. Well, Vanny Henry.
Bye.
That motion carries.
Um, Mr. Groneman.
Okay, um I'd just like to thank everybody that uh made their reports uh uh this evening. The water benchmarking is very informative. I think those statistics actually show or identify places where uh where we're doing very, very well. And there are some areas where we're not doing so well. And I think that uh now that uh we have those benchmarks that the water department, I have full faith that they will address those. As I know they have been addressing those issues in the past and they'll continue to. And I'm sure that we'll see improvement uh uh next year. Uh as now that we are broadcasting uh on video or uh meetings, I I noticed that there was a couple of uh times where we use uh anacronyms, AWWA, KPI. And I'm sure that the people who are tuning in are not aware of what the, what the meaning is. And if we could keep that in mind and when we prepare these reports and and things, if at least the first time that the the uh an acronym is used, if we could explain what, what it stands for, I think it'd be very beneficial to the, to the people. Thank you. And other than that, that's it.
Okay, uh Mr. Haley.
Thank you, Madam President. And to your last point, Mr. Groneman's last point, that'd be helpful for me too, to know what some of those acronyms are. So not just uh the general public. So thanking um certainly the staff reports this evening. Uh most informative, appreciate very much. Um the water budget, risk management. Appreciate that um that you brought those the way you did. I especially am struck by um the statement that your students saying that uh they're fast. And to look at what those metrics are and to look at the percentiles, even now more so in light of some of the comments we're having on the board. We gotta look at the percentiles and the metrics accordingly. Uh also, I want to reply that I I I am glad that we do have our AV available and whoever moved that plug up onto BPU, onto our BPU dot com. It is now accessible. It wasn't so much last time, but pull up BPU dot com, you can click right on it and uh not only uh come online, but also have the phone availability as well. And thank you, um I don't know if it was Jerry or Mr. Kemp, whoever did that for having it available um for the general public to, to, to chime in. I would also like to reiterate my hope that we may undertake, uh Madam President and uh Mr. Manager and fellow members, at least to adopt a resolution that speaks to the bifurcation of of the bill. I know that we have no force and effect or ability to send separate billing for the UG charges such as the pilot and the um trash collection and other fees or other taxes that the UG puts on our bill. But at least to have that clear entity defined, at least to propose that resolution. So when we look at what our consumption rates are, be it the water, which is held harmless now in terms of a rate increase for ten years. What, what other things have not been raised in ten years or more here? I'd have to think about that, but it'll come to me, I'm sure. But um the water and and also what our electric rates are. So after we see that and and are able to sub- submit to the public in a separate bill and another bill, that we would at least have the resolution that that might be something the board would want to provide for transparency and for clarity. So I hope that resolution might be considered. And uh finally, uh Madam President and members, I will be um unavailable to attend in person the next meeting on the seventh. I do intend to be at our retreat uh here in this room on the fifth, um but can participate by Zoom if the meeting is still held um in person on December seventh. But I will be participating by Zoom. I'll be away. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for the acknowledgement. Are you, is that all of your? Okay, Mr. Mylan, do you have con- uh comments?
I'll be brief. Uh thank you for the presentation by the uh staff this evening. Number one, uh going back to the water, here, here again, no increase for eight, nine, ten years. Excellent job. Everybody's seen forget the job you do with just a little money. No increase, then still, well, best water deployment in America. Secondly, if I'm correct, we're still in budget. Am I correct about that? We didn't vote for this year? We're in, we're in, in line with the budget for this year. Our budget is in place, correct, for this year?
Yes.
We're in budget. That's commendable to make sure that we stay within our range. I think we've got what sixteen million of money still to be spent for this year in that range. So that's commendable to make sure we budget within the next thirty days. In my basic complaint is, when I pick up a newspaper and and the television and I see where everything we talked about executive session was publicly announced. Personally, I was very unhappy with that because I felt that uh I uh executive session was confidential because we deal with human beings. First of people, it's confidential, first amendment, etc. I'd like to advise the board that we have a responsibility, a more responsibility to make sure we perform our duties as professionals. It's very important. When people calling telephone, I heard the price of the general manager salary was X number of dollars. I heard the four or five people didn't like it, two or three did, and all that sort of thing. That kind of don't sit well because the people are calling us or me. And so they digest those criticisms. And therefore, when you look at the system, the school board does not bill people every week, every month. The junior college board, Kansas City University College do not bill people every month. But UU does not bill people every month. But BPU bills people every month. So that means there's some dislike for a bill collector. And we are a bill collector. Obviously, that don't sit well with the public. We gotta be careful because we represent people's quality of life because everybody feels the utility is too high. Well, it's too high across America. We're no exception. But we are in range based on our side of capacity, one hundred fifty-six thousand people in our community. So therefore, we're in range, which what we doing. So keep that in mind. We're doing the best we can, what we got to work with. Hundred fifty-six thousand population based on our list, supposed to be reported here. That's a very small community. And yet we have a Cadillac operation in the water treatment plant. We forget about that. We're not in Flint, Michigan and so forth. We're not in Jackson, Mississippi. We ought to be think of what we got. And so I just want to say, thank the board for all you do. Maurice, thank you for your presentation and risk management. We never had one. I don't think the board knows about that. They wouldn't hear when Terry Drake is the manager. Fortunately, he, he picked the bottles up. He was able to have that in place. When the flood came, we had money to build a treatment plant. Without that risk management, we had nothing. So keep that in mind, folks. I don't know the value of our water insurance at this point or a legal insurance. I'm sure it's out there, but that's, that's a management need to address that issue. But anyway, you're doing a good job. I'm so glad we got a risk management program bill. Appreciate that. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Philip. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for your presentation tonight. It was really insightful. I appreciate that. And Maurice, thank you for all the work that you've put into introducing and implementing an enterprise risk management program at BPU. I think it's going to be really valuable. So thank you for that. You know, the, the primary reason that I voted against the resolution tonight is certainly not that I oppose a risk management plan. If, if it wasn't apparent from, from my comments earlier, I'm concerned about the lack of transparency on some of this where the board is being asked to draw conclusions and vote on policies. Where we, as I said before, we may not have all the meat and we're, we're dealt, you know, we're, we're presented with the bones. So that's something I think is critically important. We are a publicly owned utility. And I think that, I guess, we, we, we owe that much to, to our residents, to our rate payers and really to this board. So that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
This is Jeff, by a second.
It's been motion, moved in seconded, that way adjourn, roll call, please.
Don't you too much choking.
Roll call, Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Groneman.
Hi.
Haley.
Hi.
Mylan.
Ah, yes.
Mulvaney Henry.
Hi.
That motion carries, this meeting is adjourned.